Okay, and we are now live. So this is the October 27, 2020, meeting of the Town of Groton Planning and Zoning Commission. Under Public Communications, if someone from the public wants to participate, you need to raise your virtual hand. That means on an Apple computer or an Apple device, you can hover at the top of your screen and find it on a PC. You can hover at the bottom. And if you want to participate by telephone, it's star nine, and that will raise your hand, and we will recognize you at the appropriate time and let you speak to the commission.
Okay. So I'll call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. First item is roll call. It looks like everybody's on video except Kevin is. I see his name shown, but.
Because I'm a cyber guy. I know I know better, Jeff, so.
Huh?
Iber guy, I know better than to put my picture up. You're gonna have all the Russian guys like doing my random number generation.
Could get a mask or something. Well, it looks like everybody's in attendance. We have a quorum. Let's see, next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of October 13th. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Let's talk about that.
It's moved and seconded. Does anyone have any corrections?
Um, I'd like to propose one correction. I think it was after we were talking about the various things we were going to consider for the zoning regulation amendments. We had a discussion talking about that we were concerned that new zoning language could be proposed and approved and a site plan approval without a public hearing. Like happened with Three Water Street, and I think that was I was talking about, and I think Michael Kane later said that he agreed with that. So at least two commissioners talking about it. And I think, if I recall, staff was asked to find out what possible legal or other solutions there might be. There was something to that effect. And I don't see that in the minutes, and I think it was an important point, not just because I said it, but I think it's a it's a point that should be addressed. So that we could have a more democratic process.
I think we tried to pick that up in the last sentence under that discussion. The possibility of requiring special permits for some uses in the MDD and throughout the town. I think if you want to expand on that, let us know.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to expand on that, because that wasn't clear to me. I was looking to see if you hadn't covered, because I know you do try to cover these things.
So what did you want to put insert there, a discussion on changing?
Yeah, just somehow to include the fact, basically, if someone comes in, as was the case, it was really an applicant comes in with a zone change. Then, you know, to me, there should be a public hearing with that, I mean, regardless of what the zone is.
Yeah, but don't you have to have a public hearing for?
You do. You do. There is a public hearing with a zoning amendment for a zoning map change.
But there wasn't for Three Water Street.
There was for their text amendment. There was for the actual development approval. It was only a site plan. Under the old zoning regulations, it would have required a special permit, which would have had a public hearing.
Okay, so that's what you would suggest to be the best solution is to go to us?
Look at certain uses in Mystic that again would need a special permit. And it'd be a public hearing.
Okay, all right. No, that's good. Thank you very much.
So it gets all right the way it's written.
Yeah, but if Michael's okay with.
You know, I'm fine. I just, in the same vein, though, and whether or not there's any desire to talk about the electric vehicle charging stations, that was not included in it.
Oh, did we not capture that? Okay.
Well, I don't, you know, whether or not people want to go that direction or not, I don't know, but I would.
Well, I don't, yeah, okay. Yeah, I don't know if this whole section included everything that came up then, like, but you could add it. You could add that or something to that.
Add it under your gas stations or something.
There you go.
Of electric gas stations. At the.
Thank you, Sue.
Talking about, you could just add another one.
There you go.
Might as well.
Charging station should also should be addressed, because this really is the list from Diane's input. So we had those two items.
And on that. I think that that was something that I had added, or I spoke at a different point in the meeting. It may not have.
Well, yeah, but this is just, I think.
I understand. I just don't want it to sometimes these things.
Summary of Commissioner comments.
Yeah, I just want to keep it on the radar.
Yeah, it's a good idea. The sentence above that last one, I think there's a typo in there in the very last sentence. It says, I suggested a parking kiosk and staff stated they study. I think it should be the study will propose additional ideas. Just get rid of the word. People will probably figure it out. Does anybody have any other?
I don't know if it's necessary to do more, but under the next few paragraphs down, we talked about the sign. I know I've gone into quite a rant about all the things about the sign, but this one, I don't know if we need to capture it, because I know this is just a prefer for a public hearing, but this seems to indicate the only problem I had was allowing the sign to be three colors. So that was certainly wasn't wasn't the condition. So if it's going to say anything, it should have that I had stated that allowing an additional larger three color sign, maybe that'll it's closer to what my issues are.
And Hal, I remember you having that concern that that was how it was going to be interpreted at the meeting as well, I believe.
Right, yeah. It would still be a problem if it's a two color sign.
Yeah, that was what you had said last week.
So that is an additional sign.
What did you want to insert in that?
Well, it could just fit in the same sentence if you want to just poke it in there. It says, I'd say that allowing an additional and larger three color digital sign.
Oh, okay.
Or actually additional and larger electronic sign. I don't care about the colors.
Yeah, so you want to change that allowing a larger and. Anyone have any other corrections? Hearing none, then we'll vote on on the motion to approve the minutes of October 13th as amended. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Public communications, does anyone on the staff have any communications they want to?
I do not.
Staff, okay.
I don't see any of the attendees. Right, the attendees I see are all here for another application, so I don't see anyone who's interested.
No ways raising their hand, okay. And moving on. Those special permit subdivisions, we have Bridgeview subdivision Grove Avenue's acceptance of offsite open space on Packer Road.
I'm just going to share my screen so you can see the the map of the property. So the Bridgeview subdivision was a four lot subdivision on two acres on Grove Avenue on the west side of town. It was approved in July 2018. There was no area on the site that was appropriate for open space. So the developer offered one and a half acres on Haley Brook off Packer Road. It's an area that Groton Utilities has identified as a future water supply. The public improvements included just putting placing monuments, and that has all been done and inspected. And so now the developer is asking for the acceptance of the open space. So it is this area here, one and a half acres.
Yeah.
And that was part of a subdivision approval, right?
That's right. It was an offsite open space dedication. That's right.
So I'll make a motion to recommend the acceptance of the 1.5 acres of open space associated with the Bridgeview subdivision. This is for subdivision 18-03. It's moved and seconded. Sorry, discussion on the motion. Hearing none will vote on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Next is site plans. You have SIT 2009 Posetta Four Seasons Room with a camp seven water street. The applicant is in attendance. They can make their presentation. Is that Tim?
I'm here, but I thought Mark was making the presentation.
Oh, can you hear me, Tim?
Yes, I can hear you, Mark.
Okay, yeah, this, I'm in the same place I end up in with with the HTC, and then I've got no place, I have no toggle on the bottom.
Going to promote you to a panelist. So you should have some.
There we go.
Okay, good.
There we go. Okay, I was going to bring up the PDF documentation that was provided in the in the agenda, okay? Share my screen. These are the application forms. Getting to the topic, okay. Okay, so my name is Mark Camo, Mystic Architect, representing Posetta tonight. And we're here for a site application review regarding an expansion of Posetta at Seven Water Street. So we were actually, we'd embarked on this project a year ago this month. We actually submitted a previous application, which on the on the leftover here, you you can see the footprint of the existing Posetta structure with the patio in the back and the existing parking lot. Our previous October of 2019 proposal had proposed the addition over some of these parking spaces like this. So we were losing parking spaces. It presented a lot of positives for the reason why the project was put forth, and I would say I'm not going to rank them, but I think one of the main reasons of the project is that Posetta is starving for prep and kitchen space. The kitchen is just too small, given what they're producing in the lower level. And then there's kind of an imbalance between dining space seasonally of closing down the outdoor and squeezing into either the lower tavern kind of area on the lower level and the small dining rooms on the upper level. And this this actually is kind of a wellspring for both of those those parts of Posetta's operation to perform optimally. So, long story short, we've scaled the project back, and one of the drivers in that was a way to approach the architecture just a little bit differently. And the other driver was to simply preserve the parking as it is. So so the plan as put forth retains all of the parking spaces on site that it has now on the new site with all of the adjustments made onto the new site plan. So we are maintaining exactly the the onsite parking, which is very rare, as you know, downtown to be able to afford that. And we're bringing the the four C, we're bringing the addition pretty close to the parking lot here. So so this is the existing structure. This is the the area that's added on here, the main addition to the to the to the lower level for kitchen and the upper level for dining. It does extend out over here, and what we're doing is we're proposing a roof deck on this area over here, just a wide open roof deck. And so that's going to allow Posetta to have a number of different dining experiences. One would be, of course, the indoor dining taking place inside, the dining taking place within the expanded dining rooms, the patio spaces down below, and then the rooftop decks. Becoming a little bit more congruent with a lot of the the different dining offerings that are that are happening down in Mystic. Also, we are relocating some of the utilities. I should mention also that a part of the previous design, EverSource had contacted Tim about potentially removing these two large oak trees. That's never come to fruition, so as far as we know, these two large oak trees are going to stay. So we're going to basically work around that and keep the the parking lot as is. If they came down, it would have offered, you know, some space, some spatial features for us to work with with the parking, but it doesn't exist anymore. With this plan, we are also going to treat the newly installed impervious surfaces in a drainage system designed by LaRero Associates. Seamus Moran is the is the design engineer. It's a subsurface chamber system that's very effective. I've used this several times in downtown Mystic, and it was lauded by the DEP as a best practice system for handling impervious water discharge. The on this sheet, the area of disturbance is in the front of the building. As we can see here, the area where the addition is going to go and the extension of a new patio. If I go back to the site plan and enlarge this, we're what we're going to do here is this is the existing outdoor patio, and there's a stone wall right here. That stone wall will be removed, and and the wall will be rebuilt to square off to the parking, as you can see it right here. Handicap parking space goes over here. That's the offload zone, and this is the detectable handicap strip that leads you to the sidewalk that goes over here. We're and then we're relocating the access to this sidewalk that 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 meanders on to the Mystic Art Association property over here as a more direct access over to be connected with that. So we are adjusting that just a little bit, as you can see. In the in the front of Posetta, the landscaping, I put this in the area of disturbance only in that we're we're going to have landscape planters in front of the structure. And over here, there's no excavation really going on in this area. This is where the area of excavation and construction will happen on the project right here. These are the details. So this shows the existing footprint. And on the lower level, just the lower level, if you've ever been to Posetta and you're at the bar downstairs, you walk out of the lower level. We're expanding a small piece out of here on the lowest level. And that's because if, again, if you've ever been in here, this this area for dining in the lower part of Posetta is excruciatingly small and tight. And not that COVID will last forever, but but Tim and Bren's plan is to have much more spacious dining tables in the future, moving on as a response to these things that we're going through now. So we have a small expansion here, and then we have the expansion to the right side over here. We are also going to take the existing front porch, and we're proposing to just extend it just a little bit out to the front, as you can see here. So this is this is the floor plan. And this is the main level of Posetta. So this is the porch kind of comes to here, so we're just extending that out a little bit as much as we can to get closer to the property. And it allows, you know, kind of like Oyster Club has those Adirondack chairs outside in the front. They're quite popular. It allows for an extended front porch dining experience here on the front. We've got the new, what we call four season room, and the reason we call it that is because it was kind of modeled after the large windows of a greenhouse that would have been added on to the structure, you know, last century. So it's kind of stuck. So we have the large addition over on this side, the larger addition. And then the rooftop deck extends over over that lower portion that it gets extended out. We you see the staircase here. That's the staircase that currently and will continue to service the dentist that's up on this floor. So that'll just be enclosed and sneak its way down. And then this is the lowest level plan. So if, again, if you're familiar with the inside, the bar is here. This is the the small dining room, and we're just going to punch this out a little bit here to gain these three tables. And and then in the lower level, this is the entire new kitchen design for for Posetta to enhance the kitchen services that they've got now. And we've got a new men and women's room to new handicap standards and and a new waiting area with pickup and takeout that comes in over here. Architecturally, this is what, so from Water Street, you're looking at the existing Posetta here. And you're looking at the at the addition to it over here off to the side. And so we're, this should be infilled lattice is to match this. But what I tried to do here is is design something that that kind of as a pathology would have been added on to to this, you know, 19th century structure. So back then, they probably would have put something on that looked more like a sun porch with wide pilasters expressing the corners. We've got some brackery on the underside of the cornice, just a modified, almost a Boston hip roof that comes back to a balustrade flattened structure. The reason for the flattened structure here is to not encroach upon and impede the windows of the second floor, as you can see. So we turn the corner with those windows, so we've had these large windows with raised panel bottoms that come along. There's a central area here that's left clambered with with kind of a spaliated wall lattice that climbs up the side. And that's there to, first of all, originally, this piece was left with no windows as a sheer element for the structure as we're we're in the zone that we're in for hurricanes. But more importantly, it's turned into where where the the new kitchen vent stacks will come up through, and it'll hide them as well. So we've got some mechanical RTUs that'll be hidden by the balustrade up here, as you can see. And then if you walk out of that new addition, you are on the roof of what is extended lower level men and women's rooms with with waiting, but you're on a rooftop deck. Inside of this is ascending the staircase that does go up to the existing dentist office. And then beyond on that same elevation, right now, this is the corner. This is the the far east side of the far part of Posetta, but we're going to bump this out just this little bit right here to extend that dining area into into that patio, as you can see. For the rest of you. These are the existing conditions. This is the dentist area. So that's just blocked out, basically. And this is the existing lower level area. So that addition is going over here to extend this part of the dining and allow for expanded table space between between them. And that's the existing front facade as seen from Water Street. So this is the parking edge. It's a double loaded parking lot. There's cars here, and then over here off the page, there's cars. And this is the space in between that right now has the Posetta sign. There's a subsurface propane tank that's going to be relocated. And so the addition will just come out right here on this lower level. And these are the other elevations, and this is the survey. From the coastal area management point of view, we we feel that this supports and contributes the spirit of taking advantage of the Mystic River and all of the assets that that it has by by enhancing the public's experience on the river and Posetta's experience as well. It's primarily an urban lot that's that that's quite a bit paved over and developed as it is anyway. And we're taking an existing drainage situation, and we think we're going to be improving that with our new subsurface drainage that's going to go under the existing parking lot. So I think at that point, I'll stop and field any questions.
Oh, open it up to staff, and then we'll have any questions from the commission.
Okay, thank you, Mark. If you can just leave your plans up, that would be great.
Yep.
Okay. So just to, okay, so this this building is a mixed use building. There's one dwelling unit. There's professional office and restaurant. With the proposed additions, 20 parking spaces are required. 13 are provided on site. The remainder will be met with the validation program with the Mystic Museum of Art, something they're already participating in. I think you had a menu in your packet, and you can see down at the bottom, they say they validate. The lot is in the flood zone. The 2014 approval for a previous addition required dry flood proofing, something that was not installed. So it will be installed as part of this project, and it will be done prior to CO, and it will be to the current code. The drainage that Mark talked about that comes off of the addition does go through an infiltration chamber setup that is under the parking lot. From there, it discharges to a catch basin that's on the Mystic Art Association Mystic Museum of Art, excuse me, property. We have a letter in the file from the Mystic Museum of Art indicating that that work is acceptable to them, but we will need a drainage easement to allow the drainage to go into their catch basin. This, the south addition, the four season room, is going to eliminate a walk that comes from Water Street to the back patio. There is an existing walk on the north side of the building that will remain, and it needs to be tidied up a bit and cleared of a couple of obstructions to allow people to get back to the to the patio from Water Street. A construction management plan will be provided prior to filing this plan and land records. That will address how construction is going to occur on this tight site in Mystic. You know, where the dumpster is going to be, where the contractor is going to park, that that sort of thing. This is, the site is in the CAM zone. The coastal resources are Uplands and coastal hazard area, which is the flood zone. So compliance with the flood zone regulations and the stormwater treatment system are appropriate for these resources. That's that's all I have, and I can answer questions.
Okay, so opening it up then to to questions from the commissioners. I'll start with you, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mark. And Deb. So the I have three or four questions here. There previously on another application years ago, there was a bike rack in front of this property, and I believe it's gone at this point. Has that been put back in?
Yeah, we're proposing the bike rack is is between Posetta and SIFT right over here.
Okay, fine. It was there, and then for some reason it disappeared, I think. Can you show me how a pedestrian would enter the? Can you show me how a pedestrian would enter the? Or, or someone in a wheelchair, how do you get from the Mystic Art Association? I would just like to see the pathway that a person is going to take to get into the restaurant.
From the Art Association parking lot?
Well, just how is this, you know, there's a sidewalk that currently runs. Along the edge of the building, which is now going away. But how does a person who's walking? Or in a wheelchair, get to the dining area from the street and from the parking lot?
So, um, so from the parking lot, they, they would, they would get onto the, the MAA sidewalk here and come in. They would come across this grassy strip and then they would make their way up to the handicap parking space here and come around and go in. Just like the handicap parking space.
Is that grassy strip, is that a hard surface?
Uh, the, this is a paved sidewalk that crosses it.
Okay, okay, fine. And then from the street?
So then from the street, leaving the sidewalk on Water Street, you come down this sidewalk here. Which then jogs a little bit right there, you can see the jog, and then it brings you back to the same patio area back.
Oh, okay, so you're coming from the other side of the building.
Yep, so you have.
All right, that's fine. Now, the, the last question that I have has me a little bit. So this rooftop deck. Is there bathroom access? At that place, and my biggest concern are those. And, and I, and I don't know what you do with them, those smoke stacks there, which are going to be blowing right into the deck. They're almost at the same level, you're going to be. Looks like just a few feet away from them, and it's going to be blowing all the smoke from the kitchen, I would imagine. Is, is that desirable?
So from the. So from the deck, you can come through these sliding doors on the deck and come through the dining room. And around to this existing bathroom. Or from the deck, you can go down the stairs here and right inside the door here. Are the two brand new. Handicap bathrooms.
This is the second floor that we're looking at?
Yeah, this is, this is, this is, this is the, uh, the second floor where the rooftop deck is. Yeah, so you either go back into the existing Posetta dining area and use this bathroom, or you go down the stairs and inside.
Okay, and the one downstairs is handicap accessible?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, and then those vents, how do we? Understand those?
And then, and then the vents. And this is just, uh, you know, preliminarily set here by me. Just because I know they're, that they're going to have something like this, and I, I allotted for them over here. So this is up on the roof, okay? There's nothing up here at all, that's just a flat roof that basically has this mechanical equipment. And the deck is actually down here. So, so this is going to be 10 feet. The top of them will be around 15 or 16 feet above the deck surface.
Okay, all right.
And somewhat subject to design.
Yeah, no, I get it. I just, I, I, I would like. So then that balustrade that's up there is just for decorative purposes?
That's right, and it's actually. You know, in, in the final design. With whatever regulations are surrounding the intake and the outtake of those, of those units. We, we, we could take this middle element of the architecture and, and even, you know, maybe. Raise it up like a small parapet to help hide them a little bit.
It would seem like, preferably, I would like to see it up against the building and make it look like a chimney, but. I mean, I, just to have it out there like that seems kind of. I don't know if that's our purview, but.
And, and if, um. And, and if we could, we definitely will. Uh, we, you know, we, we've, we've talked about that. When this, when we took this to HTC. This, the, uh, the same question came up, Michael, and, uh, it, uh, what was pointed out to us? Not SIFT, RISE, maybe? Somebody, somebody pointed out that right across the street, they've got almost the same situation where they've got these mechanical units. This just charge up through the roof. And so, um, the, the, the discussion went away as fast as it came, but, but you're, you're absolutely right, they're, they're there. And, and we would want to do whatever we can, I think, to, you know, that we, we think we put a good design forward and we, you know, we, we don't want to have it mucked up.
Yeah, no, and to make the same mistake that SIFT made or RISE.
Exactly, exactly.
Anyway, that's, those are my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Hal. Hal, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I've got a few. Uh, one, you touched on, but going back to, I think it was a 2.1, but. Well, I get back into it, so it's got a 2.1 in front of you there. Um, the parking lot width. So the new addition, how close to the curb is that going to be? I couldn't really make that out. The existing curb of the parking lot, how close is the addition to that? Is it like a foot away?
It's about, about a foot away, yes.
Are those, are those, uh, wheel blocks, are they already there?
They are not, but they will be.
No, okay, so how deep are those parking spaces now?
Uh, they vary. This is. As, as old parking lots go, they, they vary from, um, I think a shallow as 16 feet, outboard of 19 feet.
Okay, well, kind of my problem is that. Before we put the, the wheel stops in there, the width of the parking lot from wheel to wheel is whatever was there. And now you just, by putting wheel stops in there. Shorten those spaces by two feet approximately. So. The, the parking lot's now functionally narrower. What's the dimensions of that parking lot at the narrowest spot? Narrowest place, do we still have 60 feet?
Narrow.
Do we ever have 60 feet?
I can actually, hold on one second. I can pick that exact dimension in CAD and give it to you. You raise a good point, though. In terms of, but we'd have to come up with like an alternative barrier so that somebody wouldn't overboard the curb and then hit the building.
Or have, have a building back two feet, one inch, because that's usually what you allow is two feet.
So you mean curb to curb across parking space, back out aisle, and then other parking space?
Right, correct. Assuming.
Okay, I'm, I'm just going to pick between space two and three right here.
So if you're going, well, actually curb to curb or, or wheel stop to wheel stop, whichever way you want to do it, but the functional width of the.
So about 5711.
From what to what?
From curb to curb and wheel stop to wheel stop is 552.
Oh, I guess that's pretty close. All right, you're only six inches shy then of 56, which probably is.
Yeah, it's not, it's, it's not bad, and, and I've seen, um. I've seen, I've experienced the parking lot and I've seen trucks come in and maneuver their way around and, and, um. You know, it's funny, with, with smaller tighter parking lots, people are more careful and they actually have less, less of an incident rate.
I've just considered, you know, when one car gets in there, you, you, you kind of trap yourself if it's a dead end parking lot and it's less than 60 feet functionally. But you're, you're only six inches shy, so.
It's pretty close, yeah.
So, all right, uh, let me go back in while we've got this, we can go out of the CAD. So for people in the Mystic Art Association, when they want to walk into this. They actually walk on the sidewalk and walk onto the, into the parking lot to get in, right?
Uh, yes, they, they would come, this is the sidewalk.
Yeah, they walk across and then around and behind the handicap car and into the parking lot. Which is a new thing, before they didn't need to do that, before they had that kind of open area. There's no way we can. It's one thing if you're in a parking lot crossing the parking lot, it's another thing if you're, you just got out of the parking lot. Usually you don't want to have to walk back into a parking lot to get into a space.
Right, right. I mean, the, the wall, the wall could be opened up here. Um, and I don't want to speak for Tim, uh, but, but then, you know, in, in restaurant business, now you have another entrance and exit point. And I know that control of, of any alcohol is a, is a, is a big thing when it comes to people walking off the site with their drink and things like that. So I'm sure that's something that we could maybe try to figure out a solution to.
I think it needs something there, because we don't want people, once you got people out in the parking lot, you want to leave them out of the parking lot. Don't want them walking in just to get back in through the stone wall, because that's where you located.
And I don't, I don't know, Tim, if, if Tim has any data on how many people, you know, the percentage of customers that are really coming from the parking lot versus the street. It could be a lot, it could be none, I'm not sure.
Well, nobody comes, and not, not too many people come that way, they come, they kind of stream across the, um. The, the, between the dumpster and the building in that area. It would be really handicapped, that would be the only people that would be affected. People don't use that particular little sidewalk. In general, they, they just, they just come across the, um. The, the parking area to the park, to our parking area and walk in.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a break in an inlet where this is the, the sidewalk that forks right here.
Right.
And, um, and I know that they, there's some picnic tables over here, and Tim's right, people do just kind of walk across the lot on their way in.
Or across the track also.
Yep, or from the street.
Yeah.
Well, from the street, you used to have the path coming down, and now you're not going to have that path, you're going to have a path on the other side.
Yep.
We had a path.
I always thought it was the major way, whenever I come there, I've always come down that path, which kind of brings me to. Well, one, so you won't have that now, so I need to be able to direct everyone who wants to use the patio to go to the other side. And how are we doing that?
Well, Mark, can the, can the path be just at the corner like it, like it was over here? So they can direct, so they're not coming into the middle of the wall, they're coming at the end of the wall?
Over here.
Over at the corner, right there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And, and put an opening.
That's how they've been coming in.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. I mean, it's, I understand having, having more than one opening is an issue, but. It seems to be called for there, just to make it straightforward, how you, how you sneak in.
Yeah.
You're going to have your, your, uh. Somebody stationed somewhere right, right there, I suppose, is. Taking names, so I suppose that'll be it.
I mean, that may work better as an exit kind of place as well, instead of just coming in.
Right, you have a flow in and a flow out.
Yeah, yeah, it would make, make a lot of sense, you know. And it would lessen, lessen the congestion in the intake part of it.
Yep, so I circled that to, uh, and I'll, I'll read, I'll circle the wagons with Tim about how to make a better flow situation right there on that corner. Good idea, though.
And again, from the standpoint of back on the street. Since now we've got another, it's kind of a, a learning curve going to be for everyone who's always been coming down the path on. The south side, now everybody coming from the streets is going to want to come back on the pass on the north side. What kind of signage or what are we doing out there to make that happen? Rather than have everybody come the way they've been coming and then walk down the parking lot, which we don't want them to do.
We, we will have a, um, a, a kiosk there with the menu and a lighted kiosk there to direct them down that path.
Okay, that's good. Yeah, the total parking load, we said we needed 20 more spaces. Where did that come from? What, what math is that? Is that based on the number of seats shown? Or is that a square footage? Uh, here we go.
It's based on the number of seats, Hal.
So, and it's the number of seats that were just shown on there, on their submittal. Because I'm looking at the submittal and it looks really shy of seats. I know initially. Given the COVID world, we're going to want to room to spread things out and the COVID world's going to go away. And you're going to want to get as many seats as you can get away with, which you should. But.
But actually, we found that, we, we found, we want, you know, even before COVID, we wanted to spread out seats, we just don't have the room to do it. And during COVID, when we did spread them out on the patio, people really liked it a lot better. And, and actually, we were busier with it that way than we had been with them closer together. So I think we've made the calculation, we're going to leave space between seats more than we have in the past.
Okay, and that makes a lot of sense on the, on a patio, it's kind of a patio feel to it, you don't want a crowded patio. In the dining room, you get.
Well, it also makes sense in the dining room, because people don't like our dining room because it's too squished. They feel too, you know, they, that's why we don't, don't have anybody in the dining room, even on a cold day, they're still outside, even without COVID. They will prefer to be outside and our dining room is, because it's small and, uh, constricted. Has, has, you know, it's not as, we, we, we find people don't want to be out there as much.
Yeah, it just looks, I, I know there's a balance between the two. This one looks just kind of pretty empty for seats, I just wonder if we're not looking at, I mean, I, I generally look at. Fire code saying what's 15 square feet per person. I've got something way less than that here, so. Uh, it would still seem pretty spacious if, if it looked like it had 50% more seats. Including seats that you didn't show on the patio, which of course you're going to see people, it'll be a wonderful place.
Yeah, we'll have peace on the patio.
So then the park, therefore. And, and those aren't shown, and therefore those aren't counted. So I'm kind of getting to is that I think. It's nice to have it say it's spacious, but to have it as spacious as we're talking about, those are giant people compared to those seats.
Yeah, they're small seats in Posetta, if you've ever seen. But, uh, Brent, the general manager, made a good comment when I was talking with him about this one day, that compared to a lot of restaurants. The, the, the wait and the bussing staff often have a, a pizza platter that's, you know, twice the size of what normal waitstaff are carrying. So even in their own circulation, it, it really helps out to have, um, uh, to have the space between the, between the seating. Compared to the, to the older, uh, we go to the existing plan, that, that's really packed in.
Well, that's the opposite, I agree, that's literally packed in, though often what happens, you show all, all two seaters. And half of them end up being four seaters or six seaters, because that's why you have two seaters, so you can reconfigure them easily.
Right.
And then it ends up being.
Yeah, we move them, we move them around.
That's right, you take a look at, uh, chapter, chapter one across the street. And, uh, and they're packed in with a zillion two seaters and four seaters, and winds up being long rows of people packed in. So we've got the opposite thing going for them.
Mark, isn't it showing seats on the patio there?
No.
I have a plan that shows seats on the patio.
Yeah, I, I, I'm looking at it.
Yeah.
That shows seats on the patio.
Yeah, one that we had didn't have it.
Yeah, this is the patio.
Oh, and I'm sorry, not the patio, I'm sorry, the, the, you have the porch.
The rooftop deck?
No, the front porch, the extended front porch.
Oh, oh, uh, yeah, um.
Which is pretty big extended, which means you want to put some more seats on there.
Yeah, that's a, that's an area that. Again, it's, it's a really nice experience to be up on the front porch and really nice to be able to look out at the, at the street. And it's nice for the people on the street to look up. And the, the space we have now is just too small for, for seating, it's, it's really squished in there. So we'll, we will expand it, but it won't be, it will be more seating, but it won't be extraordinarily more seating.
Okay, well, that's, what you got there is. Okay, well, that's what you got there is just squeezed in, and now you talk about a nine foot space approximately.
Right, we had a five foot space, now we'll have a nine foot space.
Nine foot space, which means you can put.
And and you need you need the space for walking into it and getting out, and we'll have a door in the corner of the dining room to go in and out of. So that so what's what has tables on it now will just be a walkway, and then the the tables will be out further, which will give a lot more space and 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 better flow for for people to go into the dining room and into the main main door also, and the and the seating will be out further.
But this actually, since I didn't see the file with all the the calculations, your calculation for seating included the seats that we don't have on this porch? Because it looks to me like certainly, people live with a crowded porch, and that's another, could be another fifteen, sixteen people out there. Two four seaters would do it. On each side.
Yeah, right now, we're able to put one two seater on one side and two two seaters on the other side. And we'll have probably two four seaters on the one side and two four seaters and one four seater on the other side. So we'll increase, we'll we'll go from six to twelve.
Okay. And so I see in this close up, there's still a little tiny bit of.
Actually, not twelve.
That from six to, oh, right, no, four, three times, no, three times, four, twelve.
At least.
I thought you talked about four, four, four tops.
That's what I.
No, three, two, two on the, two on the left side and one on the right side.
It's a lot of room for just one four.
So that's what we have now.
I'm just, I just want to make sure we're taking into consideration, I know you can put the extra parking out in the magical expanding parking spaces in the Art Association, but I want to make sure at least we're we're counting up the right number. Because it, if we're just assuming this is always going to be very spacious on the inside and.
Yeah, I mean, obviously.
Your model changes and it could be fifty percent more people.
Yeah, I don't think fifty percent, but it could be more people.
It could be more people, and we'd have no way to recoup that. Does notice, I think you have the original doors still there?
Yes.
You can still get away with with those inward.
Yeah, Fritz approved those doors. He, I I don't, I don't remember the discussion, but he was he was fine with them.
Oh, well, that's kind of scary, actually, okay.
We'll also have a door going from the dining room to the deck that people can access, that can leave the leave the building also, which will improve fire exit.
That that's that's better, but so much bigger, I'm surprised you could have any inward opening doors. You show some landscaping on this drawing, you're showing us now some landscaping in front of the porch, but nothing could fit there, could it?
I think only in boxes, I don't I don't think you can put a, I don't think you're going to be able to put a a garden in front, but you can put flower boxes or plant boxes.
Yeah, they'll they'll only be the the planter boxes in front.
Okay, what's the dimensions between the sidewalk and the porch? And it's bigger on one side than the other?
Yeah.
This is.
Twenty inches.
Hey. There's something absolutely critical about that absolute dimension, just because this will be the first one, I'm all for urbanizing that street's face there. But all the other storefronts along there, there's something, and including this place, had something on the street level, on the sidewalk level, for many, many, many feet before you got to building. And now you're pushing this one out to where those planter boxes will hit your elbows as you're walking by. And the first floor is what, five and a half feet up and then a three foot balustrade above it? So it's an eight foot wall there, right off the sidewalk. I suppose the way the zoning is in there right now, that you're just allowed to, is that true? That's why it just stretched out that far? It's unusual for along that street front to have anything, except for the factory square, everybody's kind of stepped back a decent amount. And this one's just pushed right out now.
That's right, it's a zero front yard setback.
Hal, I believe that this was also the case at the Oyster Club.
Oyster Club took off one side, and they have one section, but they've also got windows right down to their floor at that section that they did that, on the left hand side of the Oyster Club, it's still, it's a little ramp up, but it's still kind of almost street level or a couple feet above. So it was something that we discussed, it's how how much of a imposition on the sidewalk it would be. This is, this is a pretty good wall right up against the sidewalk. I think I would love to see, I see the you have the the boxes there, those boxes that are shown are on the railing, right? So maybe at the very least, what needs to happen is more boxing of stuff down near the street level too. The way you got along Main Street, we've got street level sidewalk boxes too. But something to soften the blow of having a five foot, is it lattice against there? Whether whatever it is.
Yeah, what what we'd like to do, one of the things we'd like to do, whether we do that or 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 what is to have the the boxes on the railing have have growth that that falls all the way down to the to to the ground. So it flows over and and in a lot of urban settings and a lot of lot of small villages, they have, you you're 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 right on, you know, having having the people on the deck and communicating with the sidewalk is 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 a really nice experience, actually, for people.
I think it's a delightful experience, but when it's up, well, five feet to the floor level and then three feet to the railing, it's not really, that's not a great communication. It's not quite the same. So I I think something to to soften that that elevation change is needed. Whether that's terracing your boxes or whatever that is, I think it needs something more than just plants.
Yeah, we can do, we can do that.
I think that's good for me. That's a Barbara. It's your turn.
Yes, I think as I've mentioned previously, it's it's like fitting a ten pound weight into a five pound bag. The intensity of these renovations really concern me. And maybe it's because we have so many folks now from New York that we're looking like a New York sidewalk and not a downtown Mystic sidewalk. Proposed west view shows the plants down right on the next to the sidewalk. I'm not quite sure I I understand. They don't show that on the railing, but that's all right, I understand that's a different kind of drawing, but it does show them down below near the sidewalk. I am concerned about the loss of the path. We actually had dinner there two nights ago on the patio outside, it was very pleasant. But what we do is we walk through the parking lot and that just, that's just going to happen. People are going to be walking through the parking lot. I think very few people will be walking along the so-called new sidewalk on the on the left side, I think, though, or the north side. Trying to park in there is is an adventure. It's always if, when we ever find a parking spot there, we consider itself very fortunate. But getting in and out, it does does take some patience and and agility. I'm just afraid, again, as I've said before, it's too much, it's too intense, too many more tables, too many more. Too much more of the lot is being covered. And I'm I'm just sorry to see that, I'm sorry to see that the way, that's the way the downtown Mystic is going. That's all my comments.
So you have any, any comments?
Oh, no, I think I think everybody's covered most everything. I too am very concerned about how intense downtown Mystic is getting to the point of really losing some of the things that attract people there in the first place. But we'll be talking about that more, I know as a commission, so I think there are at least some positives about this design, it's not just a box, so appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
Steve?
Oh, I I shared a concern of everybody else that we're expanding, you know, to every conceivable square inch of property. And personally, I hate the zero setback. I think it's going to, if every, you know, building did that, it's going to ruin downtown. So just for clarification, what Hal was pushing on with the front porch, it will be a served front porch? You will serve out there, it's not just for relaxing?
Yes, it is now a served front porch, and it will be.
Okay, we'll continue to do it. Okay. Now, can you go to the the drawings, plan view of the parking lot? Because I always thought that they were, you know, thirteen spots, but I thought that a lot of them were reserved, and they weren't possetted spots.
There's one that's preserved for the for the tenant upstairs.
All right, so spots nine through twelve, there's no signs on those?
No, there's signs for for Posetta and for the dentist, that 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 that, you know, either person can park there.
But only spot eight, as you're showing there, is the one that has the reserved?
That's right.
So that that is not one of the counted, that cannot be one of the counted spots for presented, then, right?
Yeah, although, yeah, it's with one, one of our staff lives there, but yeah. And that's always been that way. It used to have, we used to have actually two apartments, so we actually gained a parking spot because we don't have the two apartments.
Okay. Now, what Barbara had said about, you know, the primary path going into this place has always been to just walk down the path or through the parking lot. I think that's going to continue because that's what I'm going to do it. And, you know, I think it's just going to be a matter of fact. The the corner discussion, you know, maybe we can clean it up, but I I would plan on people still coming from Water Street. You know, diagonally across the parking lot, that's going to be. And, yeah, then the discussion of the, you know, the expansion of the front porch and, you know, but again, back to that zero setback, not a fan at all. Oh, and then one one more question about the rooftop, so was there seating shown on that?
Yes, there was.
Okay, and that was counted in the the number of new seats?
Yeah, on on this rooftop here, it's the rooftop on the basement level. But this rooftop on top of the addition, there's no seating.
Correct, but the rooftop on top of the basement level.
That's correct, yeah. Yep, and here's, and there's the seating.
Okay. Okay. All right, that's all I got.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask one more question, please?
Yes.
Is there a, I guess it would be a west view that would show a car parked in the parking lot with its tires up against the curb stop and where the the actual front of the car is? My concern is is that if a car pushes up against what was the existing curb, the car actually hangs over the curb three feet or so, there it is there.
Yep.
So where is the, where is the curb stop? I thought I heard it was at one foot, it's not drawn here.
So if I go to the plan, curb stop is one foot six, let me go back to this. So it would be like that.
Yeah, so the tire is never going to hit it, it doesn't look like it's going to hit the building first.
So if I take this car and I pull it, boom, it just, yeah, it's a point made, though, I mean, that the 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 last thing Tim's going to.
Okay, so what happens when someone backs in?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It just looks like a problem to me, and this is shortening up our parking lot. Already, we had this conversation, you know? Yeah. All right.
He's only going to accept customers that 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 drive this Toyota Camry.
And don't have a trailer hitch.
We're talking inches there, right?
Yeah, this would be two inches.
Well. The more typical is actually two feet, because you're allowed in the parking space a two foot overhang typically, which is more realistic, so even if that, and that's why I took the the dimensions that they were talking about. Even if that wheel stop was encroached inwards two feet, we'd still almost have the sixty feet that you normally have.
Yeah.
It's actually the standard aisle width that you normally have, it's six inches shy of it. Even if you moved that instead, that that wheel stop out a little bit. And yes, people with a a big old Chevy, if they back in, will smack into the wall, that's the way that works. But forward about two feet is the norm.
So Tim, we we, these are definitely functional comments that are true, and we'll definitely have to think about what to do to protect the building so that you're not repairing it every two months, yeah.
Well, we're going to be repaving the parking lot, so we do have room on the other side to go a little farther that way. And we could do that.
That's true, we we've got this this strip increases, you know, just across here. There's four feet we can pick up. If we were to 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 maneuver that a little bit.
Take it.
That's a good idea.
We need to provide for the landscaping there as well, though.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, so we could take two feet or a foot extra and still have enough room for landscaping.
If you're going to do that, consider the, I don't, it probably isn't much, you're adding a little bit of impervious surface, so just make sure that the.
Yeah, that's already, the plan is already more than we, because we were taking up more space in the parking lot before, so we're already good with that.
I mean, that seems like a solution. Because the other way is downright dangerous, or that, you know, I don't know what, someone is in there and they're walking or anything else, and they get pinched between the building and a car. It's seems like a recipe for disaster. All right, that's all, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Kevin, do you have any?
I do, I do. So while we've had a lot of discussion on the parking lot, I mean, kudos to Mark and to Tim to retain those parking spots versus, you know, trying to shove everything into the elusive algorithm of the Mystic Art Association, so. So I'm at least grateful that you guys worked that out in that particular fashion. Um, but Mark, when you were talking about the Four Seasons Room, you referred to it as, this is what would have been done. Were you referring to any other building in Mystic that has, you know, has bumped out in that particular fashion? Are we referring to a different town when you said that?
No, 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 when you, um, when you see, uh, the, these, these general structures with, uh, either federal lines or, or revival lines, um, a lot of times when times were good, they, they added onto the structure with some, some kind of a sunroom feature. And the fenestration in that area, like, like we show here, would often have reflected the fact that, um, it kind of is a pathology, for instance. Um, the, the glass that was used when, when the original building was built here. Windows were basically relegated to how big they were when they got here from England because we didn't have foundries that were producing glass yet. Uh, when we start, when we started to produce our own glass, we were able to have bigger windows. And the colonists were, were all about using whatever they could get that was new and big. And so you would see these sun porches put on. Um, I, I designed this little addition, um, sun porch addition over on, um, Park Place. Um, and, uh, and, and right around that area around Park Place, you can see these little sun additions put on where the, the, where the window fenestration scale was significantly different than that was on the original building. That's, that's what I was referring to.
Okay, residential versus commercial?
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay. Um, so, which I know we glossed over it, but does the delivery and refuse change here at all? In this plan?
Uh, nope, the, uh, the refuse is, um, right here, there's an, there's an eight-yard container with two recyclable containers enclosed within a, a structure.
And delivery?
And delivery happens, um, outside of operating hours. So there's generally no one here in the morning when Cisco and everybody shows up. So there's no conflict of traffic or anything like that.
Okay, and then it looked like when you came in through that stone wall on the patio, there is a four-top there or a four-plate. It looks like you may knock off one table there if that's where you choose to put the hostess podium. Um, so I don't know if that's gonna go into, you know, the overall planning or not, Mark, but.
Yeah, that whole thing would, would have to, I'm glad you mentioned that because I'm gonna add a circle around this here. Um, but so we would have to make sure that there's, uh, if there's a hostess station here, that, that, that this table, that's kind of in the way is, is handled well.
Yeah. And then my only, my fast, my last comment, um, Jeff, is that, as many other people have said before, the unintended consequence, and this is not specific to this project. The unintended consequence in Mystic has been to fill up every inch. Um, is to take a Mystic Art Association parking lot with no or an elusive algorithm and to continue to stack downtown Mystic, which is just going to bleed into the neighborhood. So it's just something that as a planning and zoning, I would say we need to aggressively look after. But I have to say overall, um, I think Mark and Tim did a very good job here on this plan.
Mm-hmm.
That's it.
All right. Well. I didn't have any, uh, new items that haven't already been brought up. But I do think there has to be some barrier on the side of the building so cars don't back into it. Especially these long, extra-long bed pickup trucks that probably have about ten feet after the rear wheel before the truck ends. Maybe they can't be allowed into the parking lot, I don't know.
Well, we can put compact cars on that side, a, a thing for compact cars and the other side, free parking for bigger vehicles.
That might be a good idea. I don't know how you control it.
You can't control it.
You can't.
Cannot control it. Everyone's given up on the idea.
Yeah.
We can't control that part lot to begin with. Hardly anybody that goes to Posetta parks there.
Oh, really?
Because everybody else in town's parking there.
Yeah. Maybe you need valet parking.
Yeah, we probably, probably do. Oh, we need, we need a parking attendant.
I saw what they do in Seattle in one place that way. You'd bring up your car, they'd say, you got valet parking and they'd just shuffle the cars around off and down the street. Somehow they got by with it. Thought that was using a good imagination. Does anyone have any other items that need addressing? I saw in the parking lot issue and, uh, landscaping those, we can take care of with technical items, Deb?
Yeah, I, that's right. Um, I mean, we will look at adjusting the parking lot, but keeping in mind that they need to have the, the landscape area around the outside of it, so we'll adjust it as much as we can.
Mm-hmm, okay. And I really need some barrier to protect the building, I don't know.
Just. By ten.
Hmm, wood barrier.
Four by ten.
Yeah. Something like that.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I think I noticed something else. Can I interject?
Yes, go ahead.
I just, just noticed it's not a site plan item, just, but we've got these exterior light fixtures, these onion lanterns. What are those? Considering how important we want.
As they call it.
Yeah, I don't know what an onion lantern is, but it, it, it's looking to me like it, it could be pretty bright and it could be not full cutoff.
It's, um, it's just, it's a, it's a bronzed wire cage with a very low level, uh, LED in it. Um, and I'm not sure, Tim, what you have now on the building. Uh, these were there before the 2014, so I was just trying to copy whatever was existing, but they might have been changed out since then, actually.
Yeah, we did change them.
Yeah.
To something similar, low, low voltage.
But are they, are they, are they full cutoff? I mean, you can end up with a, a huge glare bombs there. Especially if you're, if anybody's thinking that that's going to provide some light on the sidewalk. Or the adjacent parking lot, then that's not low voltage enough. I mean, it's, it's, those will be.
Yeah, they're, and, and they're mostly decorative because it, it, truth is, no lighting is really required. There's so much, um, you know, light that comes off of the street lighting on from all, from everywhere.
But I guess we're okay with mostly decorative so long as the vault, it, it's the, the wattage is so very low. You, you're just barely looking at a glow. I guess that's okay, but as soon as somebody wants to up the wattage on those things, LEDs do wonders for being super bright and pinpoint source. So it's
Yeah.
obnoxious. And it's something we're pretty good about not having.
Yeah, we're using those more for accent. We're not using them for lighting.
Okay, so I guess.
They have to be full cutoff.
Yeah, they've, and they've got to be, yeah, I think it's a regulation that they've got to be cut off.
Exactly.
And, and they're really, the, these, these large faded fluted, uh, fade fluted, um, pilasters. It's really, it was really just to draw attention to the, to the wide banding on the corners. Um, so they really were intended to be just kind of like accent architectural lighting.
No, I, I, I understand that and the lighting on there is, is great, but it should be full cutoff. It's
Yep, yep.
But that is not, so we need to fix that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure we.
Great.
Anyone have anything else? If not, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, Site Plan twenty dash oh-nine Posetta Four Season Room, Seven Water Street with the following modifications. One, the interior sidewalk on the north side of the building will be kept free from obstruction to allow pedestrian access from Water Street to the rear patio. Two, the proposed flood protection shall meet current building code. Three, a drainage easement allowing the discharge of storm water into the catch basin of the, on the Mystic Museum of Art property shall be filed in land records. Four, technical items as raised by staff shall be addressed. Is there a second?
Second.
Moving second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the, on the motion. All those in favor say aye, aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Then for the CAM, I'll move to approve the coastal site plan for Posetta Four Season Room because it is consistent with all applicable coastal policies and includes all reasonable measures to mitigate adverse impacts on coastal resources. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the, uh, motion to approve the CAM. All those in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Good luck with your sunroom.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
End deck.
Now we all have free pizza.
Yeah.
And that was part of the, the vote.
Oh, you can't bribe.
Kevin, are, are you the Kevin Fiftel of Ledgerd Colonel?
Yes, the very famous person, yes.
Wow, did you, so I'm fifty-eight, for those of you that don't know. And as a kid growing up, uh, the, the years around Kevin Fiftel and all those names, uh, those Ledgerd Colonels who made the Colonel proud back then. Uh, wow, I just thought you were a lore. You're a real guy.
Barely, barely these days, Mark, but thank you. Thank you for the kind words.
Good to meet you, uh, uh, virtually, if nothing else.
You too, Mark. I know your name.
Thanks. Okay, thanks a lot.
You have no, uh, no old business, no business. We have the, uh, amended meeting scheduled to change Wednesday back to Tuesday. Did Eric?
Yeah, there's a change in date that Hal noted.
Yeah, when I looked at it before, I just looked to make sure there are no conflicts. Look what day of the week was, figure that. Not the initial. So we're changing the, uh, October twenty-seventh to October twenty-sixth is the only change. Right? So I'll make a motion then to approve, uh, the amended meeting schedule. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in seconds. Any discussion on the, this, so a vote on approving the amended, uh, meeting schedule. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. New applications? Do we have any new applications, Deb?
Uh, we do. We have a new application for two fifteen Flanders Road, a boat repair building. That's the former Timbuktu Nursery.
Oh.
Oh.
Good. Is that allowed in that district?
Mm-hmm, it's industrial.
Is it? Well, it just seems odd to have a boat repair place where.
Well, it's an, and.
Far. Yeah, referrals, we have nothing. Commission reports, report of chair. We did, uh, have a Zoom meeting, uh, last week to with the Conservation Commission representatives to go over, uh, comments to their plan. Which nothing unusual came out of it. I don't know if you had anything to add to that. So she and I were the only ones attending from planning and zoning. Uh, hmm?
Well, that's good.
Last, yeah, they did revise, revise the plan. They did send that out. I don't know if anybody's interested in a copy of it or not. Uh, last night, uh, we had our first regional planning commission meeting since January due to the plant postponement of every, all the activities. That was the first meeting. Of course, we didn't have a, a quorum, so we had no, no business to conduct. Uh, the, in fact, the chairman didn't even show up, but. Hmm? But, uh, all we talked about was other towns and how they're they're handling, uh, virtual meetings. There was one that was unusual and they talked about uh, having one or two people actually attending it live in a, in a meeting room. And the others all using Zoom virtual meetings. But there wasn't, uh, and also the cog, uh, announced that they have some training out there that's on a YouTube access. If anybody's interested in accessing that, therefore, training for Planning and Zoning Commission people, if anybody's interested in it, let me know and I can, uh, send you the, uh, ad, address, uh, for that training. Unless everybody wants it and I can have Kara send it out. I don't know. I haven't looked at exactly what it is. And I just had one other question, Deb, on this flood, floodproof, uh, requirement that got missed. Is there some way that, that people keep track of these requirements when they get on the certificate of occupancy to make sure everything like that's satisfied?
Yeah, they do. I mean, we as planners, the lead planner on it, um, on the project, will actually have to inspect, excuse me, and sign off on it before the CO is issued. Um, in this case, um, I think a bond was posted, but it still has not been done and it's, it's just.
Oh, it's a bonded item.
Yeah.
But is that something that the COC should be held up for?
It's going to be this time.
No, I'm just curious.
But, yeah, yeah.
Because I've never seen something like that on an issue of that nature. See, missing some minor item. This one sounded, I didn't have anything else. Does anyone on the, uh, commission have anything to report? Hmm?
Question, just, yes, so we keep, I'll, I'll just keep bringing it up till we get something on. It was, is there any progress on the, uh, Pleasant Valley Apartments, the, the path on the northwest side?
Yeah, I think we've gotten a plan for it.
We got a plan for it, but I don't see any grading happening. It's.
No, no, I know it hasn't, it hasn't happened yet. We do have a plan for it. Um, we're not gonna sign off on that CO until it's done.
Okay.
We absolutely will not. Because we know we'll hear about it.
But then it's too late. And I, I do have one other item is that, uh, just noticed in the just for our references, in the, the day, the Sunday, and they announced that, uh, it's a plan for the, it's not ours, but the the Colonel Ledgerd School in City of Groton at one-twenty West Street, which is actually behind the city hall. They're proposing putting apartments there. Uh, what I find remarkable, of course, it's a perfect place for apartments. It's, it's a nice flat piece of land. It's almost walking distance to EB. It's a great place. And it took them twelve years to get to that conclusion. But the school had been closed for twelve years and they just got there. So that's why I'm kind of harping now on the idea that for the, for our schools, we've known that Butler, Claude Chester and Pleasant Valley. According to the task force that concluded in, on twenty fifteen, we knew those were gonna be closed. And we're still not even looking at what to do with those schools. So I, I'm hoping we don't end up with twelve years. We, we should have already had a plan in place. Uh, I know the, the process is that the the Board of Education has to release it first, but that's also absurd. We, the Board of Education was in the task force that said we're going to close the school, so we've known it for, for, for five years.
I told the town manager about your concerns about that, um, so he's aware of it. Um, and then with Colonel Ledgerd, actually, the city leased it for a while, thinking they were going to expand their offices over there.
They actually did work there, I believe.
They did, yeah, they did.
Best of.
And, and a new roof, I think. Um, and then, and then determined that they, they weren't going to do that and then turned it back, so.
So it hasn't really been twelve years.
Well, this, the city was actively trying to use that space because they could have accessed it from city, city hall, but it just didn't work out, I don't think.
But it's only a few years ago that they got, came to that conclusion, wasn't it?
Yeah, well, that's the city.
Well, I'm not saying it's wrong on their part, but. Well, I'm not saying it's wrong on their part, but I mean, it's part of the town having a use for the school property. It wasn't twelve years.
That's great, but it should, it should have come out of the planning when they decided.
I don't disagree with the idea.
Not wait for a decade and see what you can do.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we were trying to get the town manager, and he set up that task force to try to address that issue.
Well, Hal, at that point, uh, the city did spend quite a bit of money doing those, uh, repairs and remediations, and then, uh, you know, those are tax dollars that are lost, so.
That's right. I have noticed, by the way, we're, we're, we're getting pretty upset for good reason of of this over densification of Mystic, which I'm actually not that concerned with, but I think part of that has to do with not having any other downtown in Groton. If we were able to have a downtown to walk around elsewhere, we, some people will be peeling off and going there. And we just don't have any competition with it right now, so this is the problem, having no choices.
Oh, we got, you're right, Hal.
That's right. I think it's all the, the people won't go to the malls anymore, so they go to Mystic. I, I'm not, I wouldn't be surprised if that's what we're seeing somewhat.
To stroll through. It doesn't take much to have a downtown to stroll through, but we encountered, we got missed. I'd rather we had downtown.
You mean in turn, mystic back to the residence?
Oh, it's, it won't go away, because Mystic's still got the it, it will still have a river running through it and the drawbridge and still be as charming as ever. But it doesn't mean that all the restaurants need to be there.
Oh.
Except for Applebee's and ninety-nine.
No, what I'm afraid of is there's gonna be a big falloff, and there're gonna be all these unused buildings in a few years. May not.
I'm concerned.
Alright. Anybody have anything else? Report of, uh, staff, Deb, you have.
Um, I just wanna note the land use forum, um, that's gonna be held virtually by the Northeast cog. Um, looking at, at diversity and, and housing choices and zoning, if anybody's interested.
And we have the, uh, quarterly newsletters attached to your agenda, right? Anything else? Does anyone have anything else to identify? If not, I'll move for adjournment. Moved in seconded. Thirty-three and a half. I know we see all the new zoning red changes.
Ian's working on them.
Yeah.
Yep.
The big one, though, on the, more oral school.
Oh, that, you know, I thought that would be ready sooner. Um, I'm hoping this year.
I saw that the Fergolesky property sold.
Which property is that?
Next to Oral School Road. Probably for, uh, access road of some sort.
Probably, yep. I think, are we adjourned?
Yes.
Okay, just.
Yeah, we're all set. Good night, everybody.
Good night.